All right, good evening and happy summer to everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order with the secretary, please call the roll.
Anna Braun.
Here.
Timothy Cummings.
Here.
Jamie Falco.
Here.
Louis Figueroa. Lori Herrick.
Lee Wu-Hong.
Here.
Wilbur Pan.
Here.
And Heather Goss.
Here, please rise to salute the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, and the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. All right, good evening. We are starting with a very pleasant item, the oath of office.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mary Antangios.
I, Mary Antangios.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I possess qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It is so nice to begin with something happy. All right, having said that, I am sorry, but we have a need for a closed session. So we were here, we're celebrating, and we're leaving. All right. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12B, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as listed on tonight's agenda, whereas the length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board will reconvene and action will be taken. Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Wilbur and Jamie, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we are enclosed after some congratulatory hugs, we will all be back there. Hi, welcome back. We are going to begin again with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Goss, good evening, everyone. East Brunswick High School continues to shine academically with outstanding results from the May 2025 Advanced Placement exams. Our students and teachers performed exceptionally well, surpassing both state and global averages in nearly every AP subject offered at the high school. Across all content areas, our students achieved an impressive 95.44% pass rate, meaning nearly all students receive a score of three or higher, which is a benchmark for college readiness. Several courses saw 100% pass rates, including AP US History, Spanish Literature and Culture, German Language, Drawing, and 2D Art Design. Congratulations to our AP students and, of course, our educators for making this remarkable achievement and for continuing to set such a high standard of excellence for East Brunswick High School. I would also like to share that 443 students out of 694, and that's 64%, indicated they were accepted to their first choice college. In between working hard on student schedules, our school counseling team has been hitting the road to visit college campuses to learn the latest updates on college admissions at some of our students' favorite schools. These visits are private tours for the EB Counseling Team, which allow our staff to get a feel for each college campus to better inform our students as they apply for college. Our counselors visited the New Jersey Institute of Technology, Westchester University, Universal Institute of Technology, and Brookdale Community College. There are still many more visits to come. Counselors will be touring Rider University, University of Pennsylvania, and Drexel throughout this month. During the first three weeks of the summer early learning and kindergarten readiness camps, the students embarked on a variety of exciting and enriching adventures. They roared with the excitement on Safari Adventure Day, transforming the classroom into a lively jungle as they spotted snakes and channeled their inner wild animals. Imagination took center stage during Royal Kingdom Day, where they laughed, played, and created their own happily ever afters. Carnival Day brought high-energy fun with ring toss games, face painting, puppet theater, and joyful time with friends. And one special day was filled with wagging tails and big smiles as a furry friend paid a heartwarming visit to the classroom. The campers also experienced a peaceful and mindful yoga day where they stretched, breathed, and balanced their way through calming movements. These first three weeks were packed with creativity exploration and joyful memories for all, so, so far, it's been a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say I was just told this morning, if anyone has a young enough child to participate in community programs during the summer, I was just told this morning by my seven-year-old going into third grade that she wishes she could still do the summer community programs, and she wanted to know if she could visit her teacher, it left that much of a lasting impression. I also wanted to congratulate our AP teachers, the fact that we had 100% pass rate in APUS History is just astonishing and so amazing to hear, because that's often students' first AP class. Many, many students, it's an underclassman class, and many, many students, it is their first exposure to the AP curriculum. So congratulations to our teachers and our students. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's search update. I would first very much like to thank the community for their participation in helping us develop our leadership profile. I also want to say that we are extremely happy with the search firm that we chose to help us find our next superintendent, and they were extremely happy with the community response on the surveys. We received a higher-than-average number by more than a lot, and they were just happy to see such a high level of community participation through the survey. I spoke to someone from the firm yesterday, and they are very happy with the number of applicants that we have received. While I won't go into specifics, we have received a rich number of applicants, and our process closes for applications on April 1st.
August 1st.
I'm sorry, August 1st. Goodness, sorry, August 1st. I don't want it to be April, I'm very much enjoying summer, so a little off my game, but it closes August 1st. And I also wanted to thank the community for being helpful with participation in developing the leadership profile, because there are many districts in our county, in fact, neighboring districts, that are searching for a superintendent, and by being willing to step up and be helpful, we are leading our area in a search for a new superintendent, which hopefully will lead East Brunswick to get the best of the best. So, and thank you to the Board for the help with that as well, we've had a lot of meetings. All right, this brings us to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the Board shall provide a period for public comment at every meeting of the Board. Each person is able to speak for up to three minutes, the Board Secretary will keep the time. If you step up to speak, if you could give your name and address, unless you are a student, and then just your name and your school, we would appreciate it. Is there anyone wishing to address the Board?
Allegra Seidler, 12 South Woodland Avenue. I'm sure you've seen my email that I sent earlier today, but I just want to restate that ignoring the history with this individual is not to the benefit of the students and certainly not to the benefit of the reputation of the Board. I say this with the utmost respect, but it is direct. There are nine people seated here, and you all have an incredible amount of power, please use it to the benefit of students and not the feelings of adults. Anyone can rubber stamp an agenda, and doing so in light of the February 13th meeting and everything our group of parents has shared regarding the ILA curriculum, and doing so in the same day in which the regulations for the position are up for revision for everyone to see for themselves, renders these seats and regulations performative. As an outsider, I would imagine these decisions are tough to make when you might not have all the relevant background knowledge. However, you do know now what the state initiatives are, you were mostly here for that presentation, which touted the existing curriculum, and if you haven't realized already, you were essentially lied to by omission that night. Now you are being asked to reward this individual and cement their position within our district, further entrusting them with the education of our students despite all of this. Please, for the sake of all of our students, but especially the youngest, I am pleading with you to not approve the personnel action for the Language Arts and Social Studies K-6 Supervisor Position. Thank you.
Thank you, Allegra. Is there anyone else wishing to address the Board?
Hi, everyone, good evening. Fran Snowy, 7 Schindler Court. So, I just wanted to, in fear of kind of missing opportunities again, I decided I would take tonight to offer some suggestions on things that can be done in this school district as a, as an educator myself. So, I would like to offer immediate steps that we can take to make the district safer and more inclusive for every student. These actions that I'm going to recommend tonight do not require spending, they do not require assemblies, and they do not require anyone to create policy to make them happen, okay? Number one, principals and leaders. I would love to see an alignment of school missions and rights, right? Each principal and school leader should open the school year by revisiting the school's mission and clearly communicating what student, teacher, and parent rights and responsibilities in every building are. Why does this matter? This creates shared understanding, sets expectations, serves as transparent checks-and-balance system. It also empowers teachers who are mandated reporters to recognize and act when a student, especially one from a vulnerable group, feels unsafe. When these protocols are front and center, teachers are reminded of their legal and ethical duties, reducing incidents that are being ignored or dismissed, which we often see happening with cases of antisemitism. Immediate and professional development. There are four organizations that I'm going to list for you tonight, all of whom will give you free everything at your disposal, an array, a buffet. You have the IAC, the Israeli-American Council, you have the Anti-Defamation League, the ADL, you have Stand With Us, you also have Facing History and Ourselves, all of whom have curriculums that you can access for free plus training. We also have a relationship with the Federation that we keep touting, but as of today, nothing has been put in the schedule other than at Hammer Shuld, which was done in June, okay? Why does this matter? Teachers and staff should feel prepared and supported, that's why they don't intervene. They're not prepared and they're not supported, they don't know what to say. You have to educate them, model the inclusion, not just simply respond to crisis. Transparency, we can talk about this for days, for some reason, only one incident is in the state database. That's an incident I reported. So if we have Hibster, I'm wondering where all of our incidences are, okay? I have 19 on a separate document. Partnership with the organizations, okay? Why is this all essential? The NEA this week wants to sever ties with the ADL, this is urgent.
Time.
It's critical because our schools are at risk, okay?
Time.
Thank you, Fran.
Part two.
Sorry.
Dana Nazaria, Independence Drive.
What, your name again, please?
Dana Nazaria.
Dana, thank you.
Why taking action to, piggyback, why taking action is essential. The recent decision by the NEA, the National Education Association, to sever ties with the ADL makes our work here even more urgent. At a time when hate and bias are rising, trusted partnerships are breaking down. Without access to these critical resources, our schools risk being less prepared, less united, and less able to protect and educate all students effectively. Our children's safety depends on us today. We cannot afford to lose another summer to inaction. The time to act is now, proactively, collaboratively, and with urgency. Let every one of us, administrators, board members, teachers, and families, step up to model the integrity, courage, and community we say we value. And I'll just say off-script that my daughter suffered because of the inaction of this Board. My daughter had to file a HIB, and, which I'm sure you've all read, and it continues to impact her today. And it's real, and I was not planning on speaking at all tonight, but it is, it's real, okay? She was the last one in our family to graduate from East Brunswick, one of four, and every single one of my children, every single one graduating from 2019 until 2025 was impacted by antisemitism in the schools. So this is not just theoretical, okay? Anyway, thank you for listening. Please take the action that is at your fingertips, that we've been told would be taken. I was promised, after the incident with my daughter, that there would be district-wide training, and I expect that to happen, I certainly expect that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Is there anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting and move on to tonight's agenda. All right. I'm going to ask to move the entire agenda, for the sake of our newest member. That in no way precludes discussion of any of these items, so if you could just give what section and what item number you're referring to, so that we can all catch up and share in the discussion, that would be helpful. Also, just please be aware that if you missed a meeting, we have several minutes up for approval, and you would have to abstain on those. All right. Can I have a motion to move the entire agenda?
Move.
Wilbur and?
Second.
Jamie? All right, is there any discussion? I'm sure there is. Wilbur.
So, sorry, I do have a few questions here. So, in Business Support Operations, item number two, regarding the out-of-district tuition My expectation, I think a lot of our expectations is that we're going to be facing another seven and a half-plus million-dollar budget deficit for next year. I don't know if this is possible, but I just wanted to ask, is there room to move on the tuition rates that we're providing for out-of-district?
No. So, these are the school, our East Brunswick Public School District rates. They are formula-driven by the Department of Education. And then what happens at the end of the year, after the audit is completed, the rates get certified. So what happens in those instances is that if that real rate, the true rate at the end, comes out to be less, we would need to refund the difference to whomever paid, and conversely, if it was more, the school districts, what have you, would have to pay us the difference. We can't just come up with a number.
Sure, okay, I didn't think so, but I figured I should ask.
Dr. Pan, if I could, I just wanted to reinforce that, because we also use this tuition rate to assess charges to individuals who may be non-residents who are attending our schools. And so we discover that, and we do actually bill them tuition.
Yep.
For the days that their children are in our schools. So having that certification to back up our billing to them is really important.
Okay, great. I just wanted to piggyback and make sure I'm clear on this. You're talking about the non-resident students?
The non-residents, yeah.
Okay, just wanted for clarity, because if you're not looking at the agenda, you said out-of-district, and that would be children with IUPs. This is for non-resident, not that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry for not being clear on that.
Oh, just wanted to make sure I was in the right place as well.
Yep, that's exactly what I meant. Let's see, for the Bill List, Payments, Pending Insurance, Agenda Item 5, just a very quick question. The first item is, and if you don't, if we don't have the answer here, that's fine, it's mainly for my information. The first vendor is AME Inc. Is there a full name for that vendor? If we don't have the information here.
I can't tell you what AME would stand for. That is their business name, AME. Yeah, that's all I can tell you about that.
So when we see a vendor name, and the name is a bunch of initials, that's actually their business name?
That's correct.
Got it.
Yeah, all of the vendors are reflected based on their business names.
Perfect, thanks. Item number 10.
Still under business?
Yeah, still under business, sorry.
Thank you.
I'm trying to find it, too. Here it is. I just was having a hard time just figuring the section towards the bottom of the list of budget adjustments. There's a number of items that appear to be related to Special Education, but then the bold-faced thing underneath that says Electricity. I think I know what's going on, but I just want to make sure I was understanding that.
What page are you looking on?
On the Agenda item.
I have the Agenda item.
Yeah, the first, the very first page, right about here, where there are several items that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, that's the header for the items right below it.
Below it.
So Custodial Services, reallocating funds into electricity costs.
I see, but then that means that the header above it reads, I film for student IDs, which also didn't make sense.
Nope, sorry, that was right below it. So the electricity is a description for the items right above that.
Okay.
So those are reallocations out of various accounts to cover the additional electricity costs of $421,000.
Got it, okay, yeah, that's what I thought, thanks.
Sorry, I misread that.
Yeah, I was just having a disconnect because of how that was working. For the, under SPSS. On the May Monthly School Report for the withdrawal.
Which Agenda item?
Sorry, I'm skipping ahead to Monthly School Reports under.
Oh, that's under Special and Student Services.
Number two.
Page 27.
May or June?
On page 27.
Yeah, the withdrawal report on the very second page of that packet. Yeah, it says one of the students went to Canada, but it seems to be listed as out-of-state as opposed to out-of-country. I'm relatively sure that Canada is not a state yet.
Yes.
So, just, I just wanted to note that. And then the last thing, I'm skipping backwards because I wanted to save this for last, because I think it's the most amount of discussion. For item eight, under Board of Education, where we have the first, the first reading.
We're on page eight.
Page eight of the agenda.
Thank you.
There's the first reading for the job descriptions. Would it be okay, two things, would it be okay to just review the process for the first and second reading, just for the public's knowledge as to what we're doing here?
I believe this one is only one reading, because it's our regulation.
It's only one, okay.
Am I correct, though?
Yes, regulations have one reading.
Okay, got it, okay. The other question that I had is, in the job description itself, it appears that the more specific language as to the areas that these positions would be covering has been deleted, as opposed to being updated. So for example, for supervisor of Language Arts, which is now supervisor of Language Arts and Social Studies, it used to say that, I'm sorry, let me pull it out here. The job description used to say that the job was for Language Arts, and then it was just deleted entirely instead of being updated to Language Arts and Sciences, if I'm reading that correctly. My concern is that somebody might be looking at this job and see that the written scope of the job might be beyond, they might think they would be asked to do something that was beyond the scope of this, of a position like that, if the guardrails aren't put in. I don't know what the best answer is, I just wanted to bring that up as an item for discussion.
Nicole, did you want to add to that?
Well, actually, Dr. Bulley.
No? I'm sorry, Dr. Bulley. Sorry, Nicole.
So, the positions will, within the budget process, we had eliminated four supervisor positions, and we combined some responsibilities.
Sure.
So, one individual will be overseeing Language Arts and Social Studies K-6, and another individual will be overseeing Language Arts and Social Studies, English and Social Studies for seven through 12, and the same for Math and Science.
Right, right.
If I may?
Yeah.
So, within the job description, for example, do you have a copy of that?
I have it online.
Yep, I've got it here.
So if you look at, on the first page of it, number five, under Qualifications, and it indicates effective, I'm going to read only a section of it, effective innovation, effective and innovative instruction.
Right.
What Dr. Pan is referring to is that Language Arts, which was there previously, is being struck. And I think if I hear it correctly, that why not add, instead of striking Language Arts, why not add to that and Social Studies? So, and that carries through in several places within, throughout the job description.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, one other example, it's probably more nerve-wracking for someone that's looking at this job position, is that it used to say prepares and documents budget recommendations for the Language Arts Department, prepares and administers department budgets, blah, blah, blah. And that for Language Arts Department was struck. And so again, my concern is somebody looking at this position is that they may not, they may question, well, which budgets am I going to be recommending for, because that's not specified. You know, whereas I, you know, my idea is that if we're combining, we're combining this position so that we have Language Arts and Social Studies, then that language would be updated to say Language Arts and Social Studies Departments or something like that.
Oh, I have a solution. So, I think what. So, I think what, to address that, if it's, if the board has no objection, in those areas where the department or area of instruction is shown to be struck, we'll just modify that to add the additional area throughout. So, if that's acceptable, then that's how that would be reflected throughout.
That's perfectly fine by me.
Yep.
Okay, I'm done, thanks.
We are all in favor of greater clarity. Anyone else? Mary?
For the business and supporting operation. So, for the number four and the number five, we have bill list payment issued and bill list payment pending. So, I realize there are some payment made to PSENG. So, every family got hit in June, that big utility bill, charge hike. So, I just want to know, so this bill had the impact to our school district, and what kind of impact will have for next year's budgetary planning? So, Bernika, would you please update, what kind of the payment increase June compared with May, and what kind of impact will have to our future budgetary job planning?
So, and this is specifically with regard to electricity, I think, right?
Electricity, yes.
So, we are, as I mentioned to you earlier, Mr. Hung, we are analyzing to see what's happened in terms of the rate. If you, the board will recall, members of public will recall, that we had anticipated a significant increase to the electricity budget because of rate increases that were approved by the Board of Public Utilities. So, we are taking a look at what does that, how is that reflecting itself in our bills? It's very hard to tell right now because if we compare, you know, May to June, the weather's going to be a factor because air conditioning may not have been utilized at the same degree that it was last year, for example, or even the month before. We don't have all the June bills yet, so those are still outstanding. But what we are looking at, and I think this is something that will be more helpful, and that is, what are the rates, the rate changes? So, we're analyzing the rate changes for PSENG from June 1, what was prior to June 1, and what was as of June 1, because that was the date at which the rates changed. And also, what was the rate change for JC PNL for those periods of time? But what's important also is the fact that what the, what is reflected as the rate on the bill isn't per se what we are paying because we are part of a cooperative. And the cooperative has a lower rate. So, we're looking at what that change was, where did it go from and to, so that we can see what kind of a comparative that comes to, and then try and do some kind of a projection based on what happened last year and how does that translate forward? That's about the best we can do because we don't have a crystal ball, right, for what's going to happen over the next 12 months. But we can take our utilization and try to translate that into what the new rates are for each of the categories. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's the job I want you to do because in a few months, we are going to deal a new budget period. So, another question is about financial, this business and operation, same item 14. It's 2025 enterprise, internal service, and fiduciary finance report is of May 34th, 2025. So, the community program provide a lot of help financially to our program, but Governor Murphy announced that we should provide free pre-K or kindergarten for every kid. So, will this new policy or new law impact our community program income, and what kind of impact to our future budget?
Right. So, let's first talk a little bit about context. How much does our community programs support the general fund budget? And that support is in the range of about $2 million. That is earned and transferred over to support the budget, the regular budget. Governor Murphy did push for offering pre-K.
Universal pre-K.
Universal pre-K and full-day kindergarten. We're okay with full-day kindergarten, we've had that in place for a number of years now. This was signed into law, I don't remember the exact date, but it was signed into law by Governor Murphy.
Last week, I believe.
And I downloaded the legislation and started to analyze what it says. My read in this, and I believe what is key for us, is that it refers to school districts receiving preschool education aid in three fiscal years. So, this year, the next fiscal year, and the year after that. Key words now, and participating in the pilot program established by the commissioner. We are not participating in a pilot program. So, this, there are 19 pages of legislation. It talks about the funding, what the funding formula will be to provide monies for this, but everything appears to be geared toward those districts participating in the pilot program. So, based on my read, I'd say, this is not impacting us right now. We're not participating in a pilot program. That's not to say it won't be something to come down the road, but getting to the bottom line, because I mentioned what this community programs, how this community programs support the regular budget. If mandatory preschool were to be coming to East Brunswick, that would kill the community programs enterprise, and I don't see how the state aids to run that program would be sufficient to even cover the costs.
No.
I just don't see that. It's just not going to happen.
We are looking at this, we're looking at the law, but there's also, you know, as we all know, there's an opportunity for change in administration in November. So, I think what it does is it points us in a direction to say that even if, as Mr. Giugliano says, if you're in the pilot program and have three years in this program, you would be impacted. It tells us to get ready as a district for what may come three years from now. But we don't know what a change in leadership will be either with potentially a new direction by new administration.
So, loss of income is just one impact. If you are required to provide free pre-K education, we have enough classroom. Those classrooms need to be with toilet, with a special design for those youngsters. So, when you think about it...
There's lots of this. So, there's more to this legislation because the, if a school district, for those school districts that are going to be impacted by this, and right now, we are not, but those school districts, if they don't have the facility to provide the full-day pre-K, they will contract with providers in their community. So, the kinder care and, you know, other similar kinds of programs that exist. Concurrent with this legislation, the governor also signed other legislation that expanded the conditions for awarding contracts under the bid or competitive pricing scenarios. So, it doesn't have to be in district, it can be in a private enterprise that we would, that a school district, not East Brunswick right now, but that a school district would be paying that private enterprise to provide the pre-K program for the district. And then, there are a lot of compliance issues also that are delineated in this legislation, which I honestly, I did not get into. My concern was, how does this affect us right now and over the next year or two?
Yeah, I understand the impact is not imminent, but we need prepared for future. I'm not trying to beat you hard time, but we just, we just need get ready. Please pay attention closely to the development of any new law or any governor's same nature and inform this board.
But I think to your point with regard to space, if this were to actually be required in a few years, it would be a challenge because the space would not really, I don't see how that would exist. And we've got room for the growth that's happening right now, but to add a pre-K program for three- and four-year-olds, that's really going to push the envelope.
So, one thing I didn't see because I don't want to scare you, if we have to do that, we need hire a lot more teachers. That will be big, big money.
Well, Mr. Hung, too, I want to assure you that we are looking at the law, we are paying attention to it. There's the predictability factor that we have here, that this legislation points us in a direction of where the state is going to go. But in terms of contracting with pre-K private providers, they have to be qualified, they have to be willing, they have to be able. So, we don't know what the capacity of our private provider community is for how many seats would be available in this kind of scenario, this kind of rollout. This is brand, brand new, but we are looking to see what that, what those options might be if we in fact become impacted at some point.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Ann. I'm welcome.
Thank you. So, I had questions on item eight, on page eight. So, I see that these are going to be combined roles, but what kind of training will these individuals have? Because it's my understanding that these are existing and not new. So, what kind of training will they be receiving to ensure that they can cover both sets of curricula at the same time?
The individuals are collaborating with each other, obviously, and had transition meetings with those who were holding the roles. They're also attending meetings with representatives from the Department of Education who oversee the departments, as well as studying the standards and requirements and meeting with teachers in the, in the different departments.
Okay, and what resources are being provided to them? Because if they've only been doing one, and now they're adding another, what kind of resources are they being provided?
And what, what do you mean?
So, I'm assuming that if they've been doing math, for example, and now they're also being added science, it's been maybe quite a number of years since they've touched a science curriculum?
That's right. So, there was, we've had transition meetings since the announcement with the former supervisor in that content area with the new one to transition the resources and go through all the updates in the department and everything that's happening in the department. They're studying the standards for their new content areas, and they're meeting with the representatives from the Department of Ed so that they can understand the scope and vision for the work of that new content area. They're meeting with the teachers in the department so they understand the needs and, you know, current practices in that department and planning next steps.
Okay, and, you know, it's my understanding that they don't need to be experts in that area of study, that they're going to be supervisors for, and this is more of an oversight? Is that correct?
That is correct. So, when somebody becomes tenured as a supervisor, they're tenured as a supervisor, their expertise is supervision of certificated staff members. They don't have to be content area-specific experts in it. That's just the law of when you become a tenured supervisor. So, their expertise is really supervision, evaluations, observations, writing the observations for the non-tenured and tenured. That's the real expertise. And then, the content area is something that they can develop. They don't, there's no requirement, and there's nothing in the law that says you're a supervisor of mathematics, or you're a supervisor of language arts, you're a supervisor. And then, and then we can, in your job descriptions, and job descriptions, by the way, are managerial prerogative, you guys can change your job descriptions. So, if this doesn't, if you're not pleased with this, you guys have the ability to say, you know what, we tried this, it's not working, we're going to do supervisor of mathematics, or supervisor, or change it from K to six to K to 12. That's the board's prerogative. But under the law, the certificate is in supervision. So, that's why, and you'll see, this happens, and it's happening literally all over the state with, what's happened budget-wise is they're looking to have people develop, understand what they're supervising so that they can properly supervise the experts. And the experts are the certificated staff members. So, for example, if you're a high school science teacher, you have a specific certificate. An elementary teacher could not teach that, you have to be certificated. Supervisors do not have that, the content area's expertise lies with the certificated staff member.
Okay, thank you. And so, forgive me, but then who's the curriculum expert if it's not the supervisor?
Well, they certainly know the curriculum, and they understand the curriculum, but as Mr. Giacobi said, they're supervising instruction, so they're the experts of instruction.
Right, but then who's the subject matter expert is my question.
The teachers are the subject matter experts, as well as the supervisors have a wealth of information and understanding of the content.
And very often, just so folks know, the certificated teachers in the various areas during the summer are the ones that are working on drafting the curriculum, working with the standards, et cetera. So, it's a village, it's a team effort, but the content area specialists, the teachers, the ones that are instructing the students, they're integrally involved in the developing the curriculum for what the kids are learning. And it's got to follow the state laws, of course. But that's what happens, each and every summer, you have curriculum writing, update the curriculum based on what the standards are put out by the state.
Okay. And then, last question, is the K to six, because I, I'm not sure if we have the same amount of teachers for K to six and seven to 12, so is this an even split?
The workload will be unified. At the upper schools, there are assistant principals in regards to evaluation, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Evaluations, yeah. There's, there are more administrators in the secondary school. We also have our K to 12 supervisors, so the workload will be equitable.
The workload will be equitable amongst the supervisors and the principals to, for the supervision of...
For the job descriptions, yes.
Okay, so this is not just the supervisors, then the principals are also assisting with these?
With teacher evaluations? What do you mean?
Right, with the supervision aspect. So, this is supervisor, these are supervisor regulations, right?
Yes, principals.
So, the supervisors...
And assistant principals observe the teachers as well, and the supervisors do.
Okay, so that's how we're compensating for the lack of an even split between K to six and seven to 12?
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand. So, there's two, there are two departments in the secondary schools?
Right.
And are there more teachers K to six than are in the two departments in the secondary schools? Is that what you're asking?
Correct, yeah, that's the question.
I don't have a head count off the top of my head of how many teachers there are, but the workload will be equitable because there are additional administrators in the secondary schools to help with the teacher, who are assigned to teacher evaluations.
I believe it's the administrators, the principals and the vice principals have always observed. Teachers aren't getting observed by just their supervisor, they're usually getting observed by a supervisor, a vice principal, a principal, which gives you more information. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, it's okay.
Mr. Hung?
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't want to piggyback Mary Ann's point. So, my understanding, this job prescription is only for your, physical year 2026. So, this, I'm trying to find out the rationale behind this change. So, apparently, this job description is based on, try to separate different grade instead of the subject. So, I think if supervisor for a certain subject, I anticipate he or she should be expert in that subject. That helps that person to understand, number one, job responsibility, number two, how he or his person supervise this job. So, that would be very important. I suggest maybe, because this physical year already started on July 1st. I suggest maybe in future, with a policy committee, should revisit this job description to find out... to find out what other school district are doing, what we should do, what is best for our students' education. So, this is my point. This, I, I know some school just use, uh, subject content based, some is, uh, grade based. But there's a lot, all can, every, each way has valid argument. And as an East Brunswick, it's different with this topic was, our inapples discussing in future.
And, and just, can I use the Envision program as an example? But with the Envision program, I believe it was, uh, the conversations were being had with the, uh, curriculum supervisor. So I, you know, now in hindsight, I'm kind of wondering, well, why were those conversations had if they weren't the subject matter expert? As opposed to saying it's the teachers who are the curriculum experts?
But Dr. Bullock, in, in Envision, when we rolled out Envision, the teachers were involved in that process as well.
Yes.
And, uh, can you explain to what degree? We had visitations to other schools?
Yes, yes. I think what you're saying is that the supervisors need to be the curriculum experts or?
To some extent, yeah, yeah.
And I, I'm not arguing with you. Yes, they, they, they are in their current capacity and now they're taking on another due to the elimination of four positions.
Right.
They are, uh, taking on another content area and they're going to become the experts in that content area as well, to the best of their ability.
Okay. And, and we're providing resources to ensure that it's to their best of their ability?
We are.
Okay. Is, is there going to be some measure of those resources and to check in with them? Has a plan but put, been put in place to see, um, how they're coping with these new roles and responsibilities that they've been given?
I, I meet with each supervisor on a regular basis as a check-in. I go to department meetings. I do walkthroughs in the buildings with them. I'm in the classrooms. I hear from the teachers. And, um, uh, you know, like I said, they had transition meetings with the former person. There's three-year plans for each of the departments in place and they are going to carry that out. They're not coming in to the departments to change anything up immediately. They're listening and learning as they learn the content area and become, uh, skilled and, uh, build relationships with the teachers in those departments.
Oh, go ahead, Tim.
Switch topics real quick. Um, on business operations, the number eight. Can we just elaborate a little bit on the, I'm all for, obviously, doing whatever we can to keep technology in front of our kids and equip them with the skills and resources they need. But anytime we see a number like that in terms of the purchase of 800 laptops, it jumps out at you, obviously, in, in light of what we've been through the past two years and then what we're anticipating in the upcoming year. So, we should elaborate on the need for that and how we're continuing to manage. Looks like we got the best man to, uh, to answer that question coming up.
We do.
So those laptops are for the kids that are going from seven, um, sixth grade into seventh grade. So K through six, they use Chromebooks. Once they hit seventh grade, they're moving on to Windows laptops. The devices that we're getting back from the high school seniors, they're not, you know, it's, it's a challenge to keep them running as long as we have with the way that the budget cuts have happened. So that's, you know, directly based on the estimated number of enrollments we're going to have for seventh grade next year. And those devices, we're getting them for $355 each, which is an amazing price.
Do we typically do that then every year? Is that, are we making that level of purchase every year for every?
For the laptops, that's what we do every year for the, uh, for the seventh graders. And the Chromebooks, we don't get every single year. We usually get those, you know, every three or four years, um, to kind of, you know, age out the, the devices. The Chromebooks last a little bit longer.
I'm assuming the answer is probably no, but is there any resale value to the table equipment?
No, they're more valuable for us to save as parts. So we use devices that still run for loaners. When a kid needs to have their device repaired, we give them that. Um, and then the ones that don't function, we have storage where we keep them. And when a key needs to be replaced, when a screen needs to be replaced, we, we utilize every single part possible when we can. So, they're, they're more valuable to us in that, uh, regard.
And Mr. Eletronic, can you, can you just emphasize your break-fix, uh, capacity in your department? Because you've expanded that quite a bit over the last couple of years.
Yeah, so I mean, we do all of our repairs in-house, um, with the exception of, you know, some of the, with the equipment that's under warranty, if it's beyond our capabilities. But our techs are certified for Lenovo and Acer. So we do, uh, a lot of the warranty repair work ourselves and we get reimbursed by the vendor. But the, the technicians are all certified for those devices. And, you know, the number of devices they repair on a daily basis is staggering. If you look in Genesis, see how many tech visits they get at Churchill Junior High, it's crazy. They're kept very busy.
Anything else from Mr. Eletronic? Okay. All right. If there isn't anyone else, I would like to chime in. Mine is happy. On page eighteen, number fifteen, under, I don't know what it's under.
Under business and support.
Under business and support. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to comment in a very large budget, or a very large agenda, that I would like to thank the Churchill Junior High School PTA for donating money to be used towards the purchase and installation of two water bottle filling stations because I feel this is not only so beneficial for our students. I mean, it's a health issue. I appreciate that they carry the water bottles. I appreciate that they can refill, but I also feel it's a values-based education. You know, we don't want them just constantly throwing away plastic bottles, but to start carrying their own water bottles. And I know that at some of the elementary schools, the PTAs have done the same thing. I know the Memorial PTA did that. And it's just, it's a gift that keeps on giving to our kids, but it's also value teaching. I feel the same way about item seventeen on page twenty, which is East Brunswick earned first place at a competition and won $2,500, which recognizes the school's outstanding efforts in climate education and sustainability. So I like that our students are out there competing and winning their own money for the school. But at the same time, it's being more cautious and educated about our resources. I just think these are positive things. Anyone else?
I want to give a shout out.
Oh, go ahead.
No, since you just mentioned that, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Crotchwell and his department because they've been instrumental in implementing, along with Aramark, really, uh, environmentally sustainable solutions, uh, you know, in our cafeterias as part of child nutrition. So, thanks to everyone.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else for discussion? All right, this will be a roll call vote.
Anna Braun?
Abstain, um, item two, page five. Item three, page six. Item seven, page seven.
Hold on, you're going too fast.
I apologize.
Page five, item two.
Yep.
Page six.
Three.
Three.
Page seven, um, number seven.
Page seven, number seven.
Okay, and everything else is yes.
Noted.
Thank you.
Timothy Cummins?
Yes, uh, abstention from six and seven on page seven.
Noted. Jamie Falco?
Yes, with abstention on, uh, Board of Education, uh, item five on page seven.
Noted. Sorry, folks, it's taking longer than usual. Uh, Lori Herrick?
Yes.
Lee Wu-Hong?
Yes.
Robert Pan?
Yes.
Mary Ann Tanyos?
Abstain on one through eight.
Those would be all the minutes.
The minutes.
Uh, and regulation. Noted. Uh, and the rest are yes?
The vote on this, yes.
Thank you. Heather Guas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, motion carries. We are on to, ooh, all the way to the back. All right, committee reports, information items, and a bit of the cause for the board. I did want to begin with some thanks. Maureen Burzak, who is our tap into East Brunswick reporter, who has just been a resource and just a wealth of information for the community, recently retired. She announced her retirement. And I want to thank her for the service to the board, but more as a parent, I would like to thank her for her service to the community. Um, the number of board meetings that Maureen sat here till very, very late to make sure she had the fullness of what was going on to be able to report to the community. I think that she has been just such an asset to East Brunswick as far as bringing us together as a community. I cannot, I mean, I've lived here a long time, but to attend each vent, event everywhere the way she has and report on it. And I have talked to her at times about her desire to make sure that she reported with a detachment and showing both sides. But her presence here has just been especially valuable for the community because the community does want to know what's going on in the schools. And we have a lot of schools and over 8,000 students. And she was here to bring that news to everyone, um, with a very accurate eye. So I wanted to thank her and wish her well in her retirement, and I hope it is relaxing and wonderful. That's it for me. Anyone else?
Yeah. Um, so, um, I, I wanted to note, um, the East Brunswick, um, uh, farmers markets that have been, uh, happening recently. I was able to attend the first one, wasn't able to attend the second one. But I do want to note, uh, that as part of the activities there, there were stu, two student groups, uh, that performed. One's Lunchtime, um, which is a huge band. I don't know how many, uh, I, I've lost count of as to how many students, uh, are in that band, but it's more than the Grateful Dead, which is saying something. Um, and the other is Six to One, which is really awesome jazz funk group. Unfortunately, most of those, uh, students are graduating, so I'm not sure what's going to happen to that group, but they've been terrific over the, uh, years that they've been playing as well. And they both performed at the first one. I believe Lunchtime performed at the second one and Six to One will be performing at the next one, uh, coming up. And I just wanted to call this out because, um, often, uh, not often, sometimes I hear, um, you know, people mention that, well, the schools don't really do anything for me because my kids aren't in the schools anymore. And that is clearly untrue. I'm not sure, you know, why folks would say that, but the fact that our students are participating in a real and important way in a town event, uh, bringing value to our community, I think is something that needs to be, uh, called out and those students should be congratulated on, uh, on, on that. So, uh, did want to mention that. And the other agenda item that, um, I think should be mentioned is the Special Olympics grant, um, that, that we have. Because that is also an awesome thing, even though it's a very small item, dollar-wise on the, uh, on, uh, budget-wise compared to our entire budget. But I also want to echo, um, Heather's point that this, um, besides just being a inherently good thing to do, it does, uh, signal values that we want to pass on to our students and just another example of how our schools are contributing to our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one quick mention. The Human Relations Council is looking for student liaisons. If any students get to watch this broadcast, I would love to get an email from you. And, uh, we're looking forward to having a robust interaction with our community. Thank you.
Uh, my final thought is I am the board's representative, oops, sorry. I'm the board's representative to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. Um, there is a great deal of activity coming out through our rec sports right now, especially for our younger students. And so much of that information normally comes out on the virtual backpack. If you read, if you read the principals newsletters that come out, there's so many activities at the bottom for our students. But during the summer, we don't have those coming out to you. So on behalf of the rec sports, uh, please keep watching on social media, on the township sites, because there are clinics, there are opportunities for our youngest kids to get involved long before they get into the schools even. And to say, athletics is a huge part of who we are and just want to keep pushing forward. There's teams out there for everyone. They are constantly recruiting, so wanted to add that in. All right, if there's no one else, I need a motion to adjourn. Jamie's cold. All right, Jamie the one.
Jamie and Wilbur?
Jamie than Wilbur?
Yeah.
Discussion? No. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.